Notice hereby given that a regular meeting at the town of Boone, Minnesota, Texas, will be held Tuesday, the thirteenth day of May, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. At the South Texas Eco-Tourism Center, Texas 100, the Boone, Minnesota, Texas 78578. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.127, one or more members of the town council may attend and participate via video conference. A form of the town council will be physically present at the above meeting location. The bottom plan will be discussed. Held at quarter end, 6 o'clock.
Indication and pledge.
Good Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together in service to our community. We ask for you to guide this body, give us wisdom and a heart for this community and all those that reside within it. May please keep your hand upon those that watch over us while we work, while we sleep, and guard this community day in and day out. So, grant your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, eternal, justice broad. Honored is Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one unitary decision.
Don't fall.
Councilmember Roelman?
Here.
Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Carter?
Here. First, I want to thank the county for again letting us use this beautiful building. It's a great partnership, so. Well, I would have used instead of our usual building. Item four, open forum. At this time, there will be just about three minutes per person to address the council on any topic. There will be no discussion or formal action taken during this agenda item. Speaker must identify themselves for speaking. Speaker request form must be presented to the city secretary prior to the meeting. Very good. Item five, recognition of Tony Tommy Salazar, veteran, for his kind-hearted work in benefit to a fellow veteran.
The, yes. Can you just introduce?
Hi, this is my husband Cecil. I'm going to cry, sorry. And I'm Kate, and this is Tommy Salazar. Mike Hernandez referred Tommy to us to do some yard work. And when he, he also told Tommy of Cecil's story in Vietnam. He served two tours. He wasn't dressed, dressed in, he was just on his own. He was in four or five helicopter crashes. And the last one, that his team, they all perished. But I was blessed that he survived because he was on vacation, was on RMR. Anyways, I wanted to thank Mike for being kind and respectful and sharing Cecil's story with others. Anyway, when Tommy came to work at our yard, he, you know, put through the story and he came up to me towards the end and said, I want to do something really special for Cecil. And he made this monument for him that gave, that was managed by his airborne, his dates of service, his name. Anyway, to see these two veterans come together, one honoring the other beyond, this beyond amazing burning. In sixty-six years of my life, I've met kind people throughout my life, but nobody as kind as Tommy. His giving and graciousness is just beyond amazing. I want to honor him in a way that others should see who he is. An amazing human being who has so much respect for our country and his fellow soldiers that came before him now. So both Cecil and I want to recognize him for his kindness and to honor also his service. He was a farmer, he was in the sheriff's department, he was a police department detective, he was in Homeland Security. He was a special agent, and he has given his whole life to our community. I just want to thank Tommy for giving my husband honor and recognition for his service. You just can't imagine how much, what you did for my husband means to me. And I will never forget your big heart. Here I am, it's up to you and his service. And he's got the American flag, the Texas flag, and all his dates of service in those titles.
Thank you so much.
But I've never met anybody as kind as you, so thank you so much.
Wow. So, thanks. It's gonna be hard to stop that one. Okay, so, wow, thank you guys, that was, that was amazing. That was, you know, thank you Tommy, your, your family has long, been here a long time. We appreciate it, and you guys do, of course, so. Consideration possible, item six, consideration possible action to approve the following minutes. April eighteen, April eighth, 2025, regular count, regular council meeting minutes. April twenty-second, 2025, special council meeting minutes. Any changes, questions?
Corrections have already been there. I make a motion that we turn the minutes from April to eighth, 2025, April to twenty-second, 2025.
Motion by council member. Brian, seconded by council member Hernandez to approve the minutes.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yep.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item seven, presentation of grant report for period ending April thirtieth, 2025.
Yes, council, you should have a grant review, big reconciliation, um, big reconciliation report. Your income statement, balance sheet, check register. We are seven months through the fiscal year, and for total revenues, we're at fifty-one percent collected. Last fiscal year, we were at eighty-four percent, so we're doing great. For our total expenditures, we are currently at fifty-one percent. Last fiscal year, we were at fifty-two, so we're right on track with what we think. Over to the, um, check register. There were a couple large checks cut, um, it was our second quarter with those prisoners' ambulance that were missed. Also, a check cut for the, uh, for the auction for two portals. Didn't receive a partial refund for five forty-eight thirty-five, just to note that. Questions, maybe have a answer.
Any questions, anybody? Item eight, consideration possible action on approval of resolution number 2025-04, a resolution suspending the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five effective date of the proposal by Texas Gas Service Company to implement interim grip rate adjustments for gas utility investment in 2024 and requiring delivery of this resolution to the company in legal counsel.
Mayor, council members, it's that time of year again. We have another recommended, uh, resolution by our, our council, our outside council that typically handles the regulatory matters involving, involving energy. And, uh, and so you have the resolution in the package. It's very similar to other some of the resolutions that we've approved in years past. They were recommended.
Any questions?
What I'm watching.
Yeah, all we need is motion to, uh, well, motion regarding the approval of the.
I'll make a question, uh, request resolution number 2025-04. The resolution suspending the June twenty-fourth, twenty-five effective date of the proposal by Texas Gas Service Company to implement interim grip rate adjustments for gas utility investments.
I'll second. Motion by councilor, Brian, seconded by councilor coordinated to approve resolution 2025-05.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item ten, appointments, consideration of possible action on special appointments of the following town advised records.
Oh, mayor, members of council. Oh, you have basically a page as a backup on, on three of the boards, commissioners that we would like for the council to consider, basically activating them by either reappointing, reappointing the members or even appointing new ones as, as per the list. At this time, can we have one of you read basically the personal planning and zoning commission of the board?
Uh, well, right now, active, we have Mr. Brian Dallas. Uh, he's southeast west, Stanford North, Terrible, uh, City District Justice, uh, we're here in Muggs, and we have a lot of alternate brackets, uh, with planning and zoning.
So essentially, this would be the whole board. And, uh, and just basically as a formality, of course, obviously, you're all of the ones that get to approve of. This way, now we, we, they can formally, you know, basically be, uh, the board, the active board, if the council chooses.
Yeah, and also, uh, six, uh, would likely be reappointed.
Mayor Carter. When we go to this point and we go through this, um, we go through each, could we go through each name individually and approve and, or not approve them? Because if we do it as a group or maybe not, you know, this one's, you know, because there's other applicants there that that could be considered.
That's fine with me.
I have one question.
Yes.
Is there term two years? Or is it, is it two years or something?
Okay. And so, yeah. And so that's for appointments. So the appointments are, they're up, right?
Yes.
The whole, the whole board is up.
The whole board is up.
It's served two years.
Yes.
They're, they're in what's called holdover status. There's nothing, uh, infirm about any action they have taken during that holdover status. It just means that they're not on the term retired, and they continue to act until their successor is appointed.
Okay, so normally, we just reappoint everybody, you know, traditionally. But I understand your point of view. So let's just go from each name, start with the top and go to the bottom. And we'll just do a, a roll over on each one? Is that okay?
That, that would be, that would be, it just depends on who, who makes the motion, how the motion is made. If the, if the person making the motion wants to do it individually, by the names that are on this list.
Okay.
That, that'll be the motion. If, if someone wants to make a motion to appoint someone whose name is not on this list, then that'll be a motion, and it'll go through the process of either getting second or not getting second, and then.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Could we possibly take this to executive just to discuss each person, each person individually for the new members? And, uh, and single from there? Because I, I don't want to tap some background on the, on the personnel before voting on that.
Okay. Before we do that, um, the, the CDC and the Board of Adjustments have no
Applicants.
Applicants.
Okay.
So, so I think we should just vote on those first. And if we want to hold over on the planning and zoning, that's fine.
That's fair.
Okay? So I make a motion to approve all the members of the CDC board to be reappointed.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Carter, seconded by Councilmember Brian to approve all of the community development corporation members to be reappointed.
You have one executional vacancy? You have one executional vacancy?
Yes, it was Latina.
All the members are being reappointed now.
So when I do next?
Sure, I can do that next.
Okay. You have a second. Second. I, oh, you seconded that one.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. We want to be the second executioner. We have a motion for that. For what's that?
The second execution of the, of the.
I appoint Ms. Yvette Bennett for the second execution of the members. A second.
Motion by council member Brian, seconded by council. Will be made by council member Howard, seconded by council member Brian to, uh, to approve council member Bennett to be the second executioner.
Hey, councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Okay, now to the Board of Adjustments. Now you have another job, also, good job. Board of Adjustments, um, there's two alternate vacancies that nobody applied for. But everybody wants to be reappointed.
Yes.
So I have a motion.
I have a motion to approve, um, all of the reappointments on the Board of Adjustments.
I'll second.
Motion by councilor Howard, seconded by councilor Brian to approve all of the members of the Board of Adjustments to be reappointed.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. And after the session, we'll come back to this and revisit. Item skipped over nine. Consideration of possible action to approve resolution number 2025-05, authorizing the bank signatures for the town of Boone, Minnesota. Edit a resolution for the.
We, um, we have a municipal manager and council member, so we just wanted to update it to reflect that.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-05, um, operating the bank signatures for the town of Boone, Minnesota.
I'll second. Motion made by council member Howard, seconded by council member Hernandez to approve resolution 2025-05.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item eleven. Discussion and possible action to ratify the purchase of two portal buildings on the Port Isabel Consolidated Independent School District via auction.
Uh, mayor, members of the council, uh, essentially, uh, the school district auction of several of their portal buildings. Uh, we submitted a, a bid, uh, which is what we're asking for approval of that. Uh, for two of them, we were trying to get one to make sure that we have, that we get, we get one. Uh, and we ended up actually submitting the winning bid for two portals. Uh, the original idea was that we would use one of those portals to house, uh, temporarily, for a few years, to house the, uh, council meeting room and, uh, and also have the municipal court there. Uh, so that's one part, part of what, of what we're asking approval to move on. Uh, the second part is that now, uh, we have to discuss a staff, and, and, uh, we are all further recommending that we use the second one, uh, to actually house the police department. And the two portals would be located on the Baker Mark across the street from City Hall, across from the district. We see this, uh, maybe because of the condition of what the employees are working in and, and what the public has to go through. Uh, in, in this case, we have to come to another building to, to have our babies. And so we feel that, uh, this, this two buildings, portal buildings, uh, would take care of the city anywhere for the next three to five years, uh, giving the city time later to have a more, more permanent type of solution. So we, we would recommend that, that we proceed. Along with that, uh, we would actually have to engage, uh, an architect that would then make sure that we remodel those rooms according to the rules and regulations and to certainly make it aesthetically pleasant for the area. Uh, and, 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 and of course, a, at this point, we still don't, don't have an estimate, but there is a budget figure, uh, for Capolaule, uh, that we could use that and certainly no more than that, uh, to do the, the renovation and set them up, uh, as I said, at the, at the Baker Mark. Uh, but I would be, at this point, if the council has any questions, uh, we, we'd more gladly to, to answer them. Uh, but we recommend that, that we please keep with this project.
Well. I know we were in the mix with the police department, and it was going to be done on that. This was prior to, um, this agreement. And they had drawn up this huge plan, and they had to pay a shitload of budget money for that plan. I just want to make sure that whoever we do choose as a, as a council and as a city, that they're, they're not going to sit in this.
Okay, so, and then, let, let, let's start with the cost of the buildings.
Yeah.
All right, total cost of the building is like fifteen thousand dollars for both of them. Okay, and you, you, like, the one is right across from, from, um, from Central Office, where they used to have, have the old tax office? Right, and then the, the police was right behind it? You have the old D, no, the old DAP was on the building to the left.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I think they got that one too.
Yes.
The old DAP buildings, and that ended up being the, the tech building?
I'm, I'm sorry, the second one is located at the high school?
At the high school, yes.
No, okay. But they're basically, they're not identically a building.
But the, the one that's right across from, from Central Office, we built in there, I don't know how many, eight, nine, ten years ago, we built in for the tax office to be there? So it's already set up for like a
Office building.
An office building, okay? And then the, the police department was behind it? And that will be where the armies will be held, right? And then we have the money. You remember that we had COVID money that we had set aside, uh, remaining to do the building across the street, right? That ended up being way over budget, and we ended up moving that money to do the addition to the police, to the fire department. Okay? But we'd already budgeted that money for the fire department. Okay, for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And so the hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's what I'm proposing, is to be moved over to that, to, to fix that up for now. Right, is, we don't have a million dollars to go, and we're busting at the seams. Right, we don't have space for anything in that building to, to build it, work right, especially for the police department. And so it's a temporary fix. Who knows how long it'll last? Hopefully not too long, but until somebody can figure out where to get millions of dollars to build the city hall next door, we're kind of stuck. And it was a, within our budget.
I think you're fiscally responsible, they should be for our community. Police department and individuals who are going to be using their bill there needs to
We have the stakeholder involved, as far as the city hall chief, I know, everybody. Court is going to be held there. So we won't be, people won't have to stand outside to pay, they can be inside, so.
It, it, it's, it's not a permanent solution, but it's a solution that we need like yesterday.
Yeah. This, this plan, I'm assuming is linked with the next item as well?
That's, that's the hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that's a much, it's structural functionality.
Yes, exactly. Like, it's not going to be the prettiest thing in the world, it's not going to be the Taj Mahal of buildings in the Boone, Vista, but we'll make it pretty. Plants always make things look nice. Plants grow here. Any other questions, comments?
Will we see the plan, season stuff, we have a lot of time.
Yeah, completely.
We will have to engage, uh, engage, uh, an architect to, to make sure that we do everything properly, correctly. And also, just as important, that it will be aesthetically pleasant, as I said before.
Yeah, we're not going to put it out there and put some caliche down.
I would say, uh, more along the lines of what's required for a team, like police, if there's specific things that we have to make sure we did, or there are.
Yeah, exactly.
Your, your, your requirements for security of especially weapons?
That's one of the things we actually looked at, that these first of us are on this venture. And we found the simple things for it, like we said before, it's a temporary fix, but it will be in seventy.
Until the town can figure out where to get a really good grant for millions of dollars to build a new city hall, it's, I don't want to raise taxes anymore on anybody, I don't want to do that, so this is where we're at, so. Very emotional. Motion by council member Dr. Manos, seconded by council member Hernandez to approve the purchase of the portal buildings.
Councilmember Roelman?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item twelve, City Hall Building, discussion of possible action to approve for possible major renovation of the City Hall Building. Item twelve, city hall building, discussion and possible action to approve for possible major renovation of the city hall building.
Uh, I think that's made very wrong, but this is the council. Uh, at this point, we're just basically, uh, we should have just a discussion or presentation. Uh, obviously, by doing, uh, implemented the action that the council just approved, uh, actually, it's gonna give us some space additional at the current city hall. Uh, I'm then for administration to sort of have a more elbow room. Uh, and what we would like to do is start looking into the possibility, uh, if it can be done practically, but more importantly, if we can find the funds for it. Uh, but at least that we, if we, if we're gonna look into it by now, the council's aware that we're, 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 we're studying this. Uh, and that's basically what we're asking, so that it won't be a surprise for anyone. Uh, that, that we also would like to figure out a way that's, uh, practical and financially feasible, uh, that we could do also some, some, some good renovation for the, for the existing city hall. And again, no, no action required for some of that.
Yeah, kind of what we discussed earlier. Once we get
Certainly, if you have any questions.
We discussed previously how there is the need for, uh, for it to be done with a roof. So would this be included?
That, that would be the, if, if we were to be able to find the funding, that this goes through, that would be the main, the main nature, uh, uh, improvement to the building of basically a new roof.
So the funding, where is the funding gonna come from?
We don't know that yet, but, uh, if we can't find the funding, we can't do it.
So the one fifty is gonna be utilized?
The, the, the funding will come, like I say, when we originally did the budget last year, we budgeted the COVID money to do the building next door. Right, and then at the, at the eleventh hour, before we're gonna lose the money, okay, we budgeted that money to go over to do the improvement at the fire station. We had budgeted that money during the budget process to do the, the improvement for that. And so we have that budget money, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, that we can move back from the fire department, back to city hall, to do the original project that we had planned on. But this time in budget. Cause the building is gonna be fifteen thousand versus three hundred thousand. And so
They're gonna take your, your one fifty?
The one fifty will, will be able to cover, that's, that's, that's what I'm proposing, is the hundred fifty thousand dollars to do the project for the, for the two portal buildings.
Okay, maybe I'm confused, I thought we're talking about where the current city hall.
Uh, then we would look into it.
Yes.
Yeah, and if there's money left over from that budget.
But it's like a, that, that, that roof to be fixed is not that much money, it'll be like twelve, fourteen thousand dollars.
So the two portal buildings, the left over money at the city hall.
Yeah, and, and we just wanna make you aware that we're gonna at least look into this. Uh, and no actions required.
So, there is money there, we have a lot of reserves. And we've kind of helped, we've built these reserves for this kind of project, right? And so now we won't drain our reserves. We'll still have plenty of reserves left and hopefully build and build and build, and so someday the city will be able to have the Taj Mahal. The Taj Mahal will be something nice.
Yes.
So. Very good. Any other questions?
I just wanna say thank you to Mr. Trevino and the staff for putting this on their priority list, because I think it's very important that your day in, day out is, you know, feasible and, uh, and a priority to upkeep. Um, and, you know, it's, it's something that you're, um, excited to work, work to every day, you know, so, um, for the upgrades and
We've all been to the city and we all know how crowded it is. And especially when there's a court going on and those kind of things, we need to have some space for people to do their job right. Item thirteen. Discussion and possible action, approval for city manager to travel to Frederick's Church, Texas to attend Texas Municipal League's Small Town Conference on May fifteenth and sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Mayor and council members to have traveled to San Antonio, Texas to attend TML's elected city officials orientation on July seventeenth and eighteenth. And poli-, uh, policy, police sergeant? Sorry about the, yeah, the typo. This is part is to have traveled to Fort Worth, Texas to attend training for TASER instruction on June twenty fifth and twenty sixth. On top, um, city manager is not gonna go to Frederick's Church.
I'm gonna go to the island. Yeah, but we do have at least two members of the council who express interest in attending the, uh, the city officials orientation. At this point, it would be, if the two of them, uh, basically wanna do that, and then anybody else, uh, at least, uh, our new member, uh, uh, Perez and for that.
If anybody else wants to go. Could go get some, get some training. Anything to develop that's on this, this top, it's a lot of, the lawyer practitioners who, uh, who work with cities on a daily basis, like, like I do, are the presenters at, at these things, and, uh, it's, it's, it's a top project.
What did you?
It's an invitation.
There's actually two dates for that, if you can't go, it's a lot of words on August date also.
Oh.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the travel and training for the city manager, the council members, and the police officer, Sergeant Argus. For their respective, um,
Can I ask you to revise it, because the city manager's not gonna go to Frederick's Church.
Oh, to the island.
He's gonna go to the island.
It's a lot of those earnings.
So, to approve the training, travel, the city manager, um, to attend the island conference, to council members in San Antonio, and this, uh, police sergeant in Fort Worth, Texas.
But also, the, the PML island, uh, conference, which is at the end of the week, uh, if, if anybody, a member of the council wishes to attend, uh, we may have a little problem, but, but I think we can, we can get some of you, if you're interested in attending, uh, here at the, at the island. It's, uh, it's a regional meeting. Uh, this will be the time, if you all, uh, wanna do that, that way we can include you.
Was I always asked if we were gonna go over there in September?
Another was about next weekend, um, although we have another one this weekend also?
It, it's this, uh
Fifteen to sixteen.
It's this, fifteen to sixteen?
Yeah.
On during the day, right?
There's it, right. There's a motion by council member Howard, who have a second.
Second.
Second, second by council member Hernandez to approve the training and travel.
As a Council member Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Yes.
Council member Anandis?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Item fourteen. Discussion and possible action on website services, something we really need.
Yes, um, mayor and, and members of the council, uh, they, uh, we, uh, actually met, uh, our councilman Brian and Richard, staff and I met with, uh, a gentleman out of San Antonio who is an ITS expert. Uh, the gentleman was referred by, uh, a new council member, Perez. Uh, and he is going to, uh, we had a very, very good group of discussion with him, uh, not only for the, uh, for, for the website, but possibly other work, uh, that would be, be of interest to the city. But, uh, he's going to submit a, a written proposal to us, uh, for the council to consider. Uh, and at that point, then we bring the proposal to you, and if it's approved, then obviously we will be able to, to work with the gentleman, but, uh, uh, I mean, you can say, uh, but I'm very impressed with, uh, the possibility of, of how they can help us with the website and other things.
I, I think he's gonna give us, or from what he's taught to us, he'll see the proposal, that he's gonna give us all the stuff we were talking about. And give us the ability to, um, use the website in a way that's going to not only promote the Guggan Vista, but be user friendly and allow our community members to find all the stuff that they don't find. Um, and we would be able to edit the website ourselves, uh, in a timely manner. It sounds very promising.
There, there's no action required, just simple.
Did he talk about a timeline to the
Uh, well, yeah.
Implementation.
Uh, of the website, what, uh?
Is it, so he said the, the, when he brushed the proposal back to us, that we do it as a goal, that he said four to six weeks.
About a year and a half.
Oh.
Yes, no, that was one of my first questions.
Any other questions? Item fifteen, discussion and possible action in reference to drainage improvement grant from the GL, the General Land Office, CDBG, ER twenty four dash oh sixty seven dash surzer five dash E one dash ninety two.
Uh, mayor and members of the council, uh, just today, I received, uh, all the attachments that you have in your, in your packet that I have. Uh, it's a lot of reading, uh, what I have planned to do, which, uh, is part of what I would like to just, uh, present to you today, is that obviously a grant is granted and, and, and they're great for the community, because obviously, we don't have to raise taxes and, 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 and be able to, uh, bring about the principal changes that are needed. And this particular claim case is improving the drainage. Uh, it's in the area of, of those streets, uh, from High Biscuit, uh, of poor streets. Uh, this is, uh, this is something that started a culture way, way back then, in terms of a long-term time for improving drainage. Uh, the original plan, as I understand it, is that, uh, there would be a drain pipe, uh, laid under the middle of the street. Uh, and then, uh, at the, each intersection, there would be culverts where then, the, at that point, after the ditch water gets there, then it would be obviously piped into the main line that goes down the middle of the street. Uh, this grant that was funded by KMO, uh, through Grantworth, their consultant, uh, granted the city, uh, just under eight hundred thousand dollars, the city permitted about eleven thousand as a local share. But it seems that from the very beginning, uh, the fact that, uh, it was too expensive, uh, to even consider the initial plan, uh, they went ahead and the engineer, there was, there was engaged for that project. They went ahead and, uh, and decided to just basically do digital improved ditches, which is, it'll help, but it's not something that, uh, that is what, it was the original plan. I've been meeting, uh, with the grant writers, with GLO, and it seems that, uh, this grant are hoping that it doesn't prove to be more of a problem than, than what it's gonna help. And as you can see, which I'm not gonna go into this, I didn't have time to read all the material. Uh, there was an audit done, uh, by GLO, and we're already gonna have to deal with some, some, some concerns that the funding agency has. Uh, so, uh, I will provide a written report once I go through all this information. Uh, and talk again, talk again with, uh, the grant writer, the grant administrator, which is Grantworth, uh, and GLO, and, and, and know exactly what we're gonna have to do, because we, we're gonna have to do something. Uh, the last thing I wanted us to do is that all these issues would not, uh, end up jeopardizing the loan itself, I mean, the grant, uh, and, and, uh, for the area, you're looking at two, three million, no, probably millions of dollars, which obviously eight hundred thousand dollars is gonna cover it. So, uh, again, we're just bringing you up today, uh, with this, uh, this is a kind of a bittersweet, it's a grant, but it's, it's giving us some, some heartache. Uh, and we'll be addressing it, and I'll keep your form, uh, even if it's before the next meeting, you'll be writing, if not at the next meeting, we will bring you up to it after we have all the meetings, but then we have a, a resolution, a, a potential resolution.
As everybody knows, it started in twenty twenty two. And so it's, uh, the GLO is not the fastest people in the world. You can find out. Hopefully, we get some resolution on that, and we get to do some drainage projects. Item sixteen, executive session, executive closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is authorized by the Department of Code regarding any matters listed on the attendance pursuant to section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney five five one point zero seven two, liberation regarding real property five five one point zero seven four, liberation regarding personnel matters, and five five one one zero eight seven, liberation regarding economic development negotiation. This is a discussion of new organizational structure, including personnel paid. Something by council member Howard, seconded by councilman Brian to go into executive session.
Council member Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard? Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Yes.
Council member Anandis?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. In executive session at six. All right, we're back to executive session at seven thirty. Possible action pursuant to executive session deliberation. Making motion for the city manager to proceed as discussed in executive session. Mayor Carter, seconded by council member Brian to city manager proceed as discussed in executive session.
Council member Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Yes.
Council member Anandis?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go back to item ten. Okay, to approve, um, if there is a possible action on official appointments to follow in the county advising board, planning and zoning mission. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the planning and zoning board as
One second.
Motion made by council member Brian, seconded by council member Hernandez, item four, four nilias, to approve the planning, zoning, uh, reappointments.
Council member Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Yes.
Council member Anandis? Mayor Carter?
Yes. Okay, so, yeah, exactly. And so we have, uh, one alternate vacancy. So I have a motion to approve somebody for that position.
I'll make a motion to approve for the vacancy Myra Woods.
Oh, second.
Motion made by council member Howard, seconded by council member Hernandez, to approve Myra Woods as the alternate vacancy.
Council member Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Yes.
Council member Anandis?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Right?
Yeah.
Item eighteen, we are, pass on. Item nineteen, the manager.
Uh, I, I think, uh, provided enough for today.
Very good.
Item twenty, adjournment.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Seconded by council member Hernandez to
Roman?
Yes.
Council member Howard?
Yes.
Council member Fittis?
Yes.
Council member Hernandez?
Yes.
Council member Ryan?
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes, adjourned at seven thirty four.
Thank you, buddy.